Ms. Quigley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. You have before you your agenda. We would like to request that item number 21 be pulled from the agenda. We'd also recommend making the following changes to the sequence of agenda items to ensure a quorum is met for voting on the consent agenda. Agenda item number four, citizens' participation, will be your next item, followed by the consent agenda, which consists of five, of items five through 38, followed by the consent agenda, which is item number two, following consent agenda, item number two, general manager's report, and then number three, which is the NDOT director's report, followed by item number 39, your final citizens' participation period. With those recommendations in consideration, staff, your agenda is prepared and ready for your approval.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Next item is to conduct your first citizens' participation period.
This is the first time set aside for those wishing to speak to the board on a posted agenda item. Seeing and hearing no one, we'll close this portion of public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your next item is your consent agenda, which is made up of items five through 38 and may be taken in one motion.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your next item is your general manager's report, and we do have several items we would share with you today. First, our first item is to recognize paratransit driver, a paratransit operator from TransDev. We'd like to recognize Robert Seibert. Robert has been a paratransit operator since 2010 and most recently averaged a 99% on-time performance rate. Robert provides outstanding customer service and consistently comes to work with a smile on his face and a can-do attitude. If Robert is with us today, we'd like to invite him to come down and be recognized by the board.
the clients because they help out a lot being out there on time, keep the bus scheduled, and thank everyone here for the recognition. Thank you.
Next, we'd like to take a moment to recognize a very valuable member of the MV team who's retiring after dedicating more than 40 years of his professional career to the transportation industry. Mr. Wayne Fritz, who I believe is with us today, is an accomplished transit professional who has worked with the RTC for more than two years through a contract with MV Transportation. On behalf of the RTC, I'd like to acknowledge him for his hard work and dedication to the transportation industry. Wayne's knowledge and experience will be greatly missed. We congratulate him on his retirement and wish him nothing but the best during the next chapter of his life.
You're not going to get off that easy. Come on down to say a few words.
I want to thank Chairman Brown, members of the board for this acknowledgement. That's very nice and a little bit of a surprise, I think, I have some folks who I'll be talking to later. It's very true. This has been a remarkable assignment for me. I've spent quite a number of years in this business, and I would tell you that, from that experience, that I've never had the privilege of working with such professionals, certainly as General Manager Tina Quigley, Assistant General Manager MJ Maynard, and the Director of Fixed Route Services Cindy, Cindy, what's your new last name?
Carter.
They are really great people, and we are very fortunate to have them working with us. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
We promised that on a quarterly basis, we would come back to you to report on the status of the fuel revenue indexing effort. RTC is happy to report that as of September 30th of this year, we have some new and improved numbers. 128 contracts have been awarded, and that's gone, as a result, 184 businesses have received contracts. Seventy-four of those businesses are local, small businesses, and I can let you know that of the 128, 100% of those contracts have been local. You made it very clear to us that you wanted to see it stay local, that you wanted to see small businesses get opportunities, and that you wanted this work out as soon as possible so that our public tax, our taxpayers could see the result of this new revenue source. $305 million worth of work has been awarded through September 30th again, which results in about just a little less than 4,000 jobs. Again, you made it very clear to us that this work meant jobs in Southern Nevada and needed to be moving forward as quickly as possible. We are happy to report that there's actually been a savings, or contracts have come in lower than engineers' estimate. It's a little over $46 million worth of savings or costs that we were expecting and didn't realize, which has allowed us, originally, we started with 199 projects. Shortly afterwards, we realized when bids were coming in lower, we're going to be able to get 215 contracts, but instead, it looks like we're headed towards 220 total projects that'll be under construction as a result of this work. So we are lucky that our contractors continue to bid very competitively to get this work, and we are realizing some savings. Recent groundbreakings we've had, NDOT broke ground on the US 95 Ann Road to Durango Drive project this summer with an event held near the construction site. The project is funded in part with more than $6 million in fuel revenue indexing funds, and this important project will provide connectivity and access to many businesses and residents in the area while creating more than 83 jobs. Other projects in progress, Clark County broke ground on the 215 Airport Connector in August. This $22 million fuel revenue indexed funded project will provide direct connections for commuters with a ramp and a bridge structure from southbound Airport Connector to eastbound I-215, as well as widening westbound I-215. This project's created 295 jobs for our local community. The city of North Las Vegas also completed the LoSi Road Lone Mountain Pedestrian Bridge in August. The bridge provides residents with safe access to multi-use trails for outdoor activities like hiking and biking. The $2.3 million project created 34 jobs. And the city of Henderson has recently, has several roadway projects underway along Green Valley Parkway, Windmill Lane, and Pecos Road. These projects include roadway rehabilitation and repaving along these busy streets. Now, with all this work certainly comes, and with all these jobs, comes a lot of roadway disruption and orange cones. As you know, we created the Seeing Orange Campaign as a way for Valley residents to be able to contact one number, one website, to learn more about each of the projects in their area, and to be able to ask questions, learn what the project is, how long it's going to be going on, how long they'll be disrupted for. One of the nice things about this is we also hear from our community as to which projects are causing the most disruption, and we're learning that actually, the projects that get most calls are not necessarily fuel revenue index-related projects. They are other types of public works projects, whether they're sewer projects, Whitney Interceptor in Henderson, these types of projects. But what's nice about this website, this hotline, is no matter what the project is, we will find out and respond to you within 24 hours as to, we will let you know, we will acknowledge having received your question within 24 hours, and within 72 hours, we will have back to you the answers to your questions. So we hope to continue promoting this campaign even beyond fuel revenue indexing. We think it's a very, it's something that the public very much appreciates, being able to just have one phone call, one phone call, that's all, to learn more about any project that's going on in the area, whether it's utilities, developer, public works, whatever it is, one phone call. And so far to date, we have received 369 inquiries, and that number, as this campaign is getting out there, we're seeing more and more calls daily, and of course, but we're able to answer them pretty quickly because at this point, we know everything that's going on. The lady who takes the calls has more understanding of what's going on in the Valley than any of us in any of our public works departments. She knows what's going on in the whole Valley. Next up, Mark Trozdahl, our Director of Finance, will share an update on the index fuel tax bonds credit rating increase.
Thank you, Tina. Last week, Moody's did give us a report that they increased our credit rating from A1 to double A3. And then yesterday, we received a notice that S&amp;P also increased our credit rating from A+ to double A-, so this is a real nice thing for our debt with indexed fuel tax bonds. These increased credit ratings will save us about 10 to 15 basis points of interest, or about $1.1 million over the 20-year term of the $85 million that we're selling right now. That will turn in, we have about $445 million remaining to issue, and so over those issuances, that'll save about $6.6 million total for the program, having that. A few listed reasons that Moody's listed for increasing the credit ratings was that demand for fuel was relatively stable despite our economic volatility, and that was specifically that the fuel tax was actually more stable than the sales tax, and there's a lot of California bonds that are double A-rated that are sales tax. The other thing is that the RTC has the flexibility to manage the scope financing and pacing of capital projects as the region's transportation planning organization, so they like that feature of our organization. The other thing was that Las Vegas draws millions of tourists, and as a regional center with a growing population, they enjoyed that. We had projected growth in the population of Las Vegas, and unemployment improved with an expanding labor force and declining joblessness. So they enjoyed the credit presentation we gave them, and these are the main reasons that they increased the credit rating. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Perfect. Thanks, Mark.
Next, we'd like to update you on our proposed transit service changes, and we have Jacob Simmons, who's our Senior Transit Operations Planner, to present to you.
Is this a rookie presentation?
More of a returning.
Okay.
As you can see, I'm a little rusty. Good morning, Commissioners. Again, for the record, my name is Jacob Simmons, Senior Transit Operations Planner for the RTC. On Sunday, November 8th, the RTC will conduct its annual fixed route service change. A 30-day public comment period was held throughout the month of September, and we received 71 comments from our customers in the community. Comments were solicited through online, email, phone calls, mail, fax, and in-person. We also held a public hearing at the Bonneville Transit Center to answer any questions and further solicit comments from our customers. We received a total of 71 comments during the 30-day public process, and this presentation will provide an overview of the proposed changes. The map on the screen is the proposed system map to be effective November 8th, 2015. Overall, staff is proposing to add approximately 60,000 service hours to our transit system. This approximate 4% increase in service will result in increased frequency on several routes and a streamlined route network. To better serve the west and southwest portions of the Las Vegas Valley, staff is proposing to launch new Route 121, Durango Buffalo, as well as to streamline Route 120, which will become Fort Apache Rampart, and as well as to extend Route 212, Sunset Route, westward into the southwestern portion of the Valley. Each of these three routes would also operate every 30 minutes during weekday daytime hours, which is a significant increase compared to the hourly service on the existing Route 120. The end result is a significant improvement in transit service and a simplification of the network in key areas of the west and southwest where we are seeing significant growth. The ADA paratransit service area will be adjusted to maintain the required 3/4 of a mile boundary around fixed route service. Additionally, paratransit service will also be offered, is proposed to be offered, within 3/4 of a mile around the current DVX route, resulting in paratransit service, ADA paratransit service, to the VA healthcare facility on North Pecos Road and the 215. Due to all of these paratransit service area changes, approximately 80 clients will be added into the service area. The overall highlights of the proposed changes include higher frequency on six routes, route changes on 14 routes, schedule changes on 22 routes, extended service hours on Route 217, Warm Springs Downtown Henderson. That means earlier morning service and later evening service. Route 217 is also one of the routes that's proposed to receive a frequency increase. The route currently operates every 60 minutes, and with these proposed changes, it would go to every 30 minutes during weekday daytime hours, which is a significant improvement for customers along that route. Finally, staff is proposing to transition the service hours from the Sahara Express or SX Shuttle into the main SX-A, Sahara Express A, and Sahara Express B branches. This transition will help bring the Sahara Express to frequent service standards, meaning the Sahara Express will operate at least every 15 minutes during weekday afternoon hours, and every 20 minutes during other daytime hours seven days a week. With the Sahara Express, we would now have nine routes that meet this highest standard of frequency in the RTC network. We currently have eight. That is all I have. Are there any questions?
Comments or questions for Mr. Simmons? Mayor Goodman?
Is there an app? Do we find out on the routes if delays, whatever? Oh, here we are, on the range.
Mayor, we've partnered with Masabi. It's a company that's producing an app for the RTC. We are just now working on the scope of work. We'll have something to present to the board sometime first quarter of 2016.
Because this is awesome. Thank you. I mean, this would be wonderful if we could access that way to see if there's a delay and to pick up something else as well. Thank you. Great.
Thank you.
All said, thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
Next, we have our quarterly Driver Focus Group report to you. As you recall, you asked us a while ago to meet regularly with the drivers to learn more about what issues were on their mind, and MJ Maynard has been, has taken that seriously and is here to report to you on her latest focus group.
Thanks, Tina. At the July Fixed Route Driver Focus Group, drivers inquired about several topics. One item brought to our attention were the vehicle cameras and if there are plans to update the system. To answer their concerns, we shared that the installation of new cameras would begin in September. The new cameras incorporate many improvements, including high-definition cameras, backup cameras, and monitors to view the rear doors. Drivers also inquired about relocating a stop along the Tropicana Route that sits on a gravel lot. Because there isn't a sidewalk built at that location, it is especially difficult and dangerous for many of our seniors and disabled passengers to access. We evaluated the existing location and worked with Clark County to submit the proper forms to move the stop. We were happy to report that the stop was successfully relocated this past August. Drivers also asked if the RTC will purchase more buses to replace retired vehicles in our fleet. We were pleased to share that the RTC has an aggressive, grant-funded vehicle replacement schedule. As part of that program, we will receive a total of 55 replacement C&amp;G vehicles in 2016, with another 50 new vehicles each year through fiscal year 2022. Next slide. Also at this July meeting, the Paratransit Driver Focus Group provided great feedback regarding placement of some of our paratransit stops, specifically stops at the Powell Station and Mountain View Hospital. The drivers were concerned about the safety of our passengers and the ability to safely maneuver the buses at these locations. While many stop locations are determined by the property owner, we were able to successfully negotiate new stop locations at both properties. Additionally, the drivers rely on RTC's bus stop database to provide the most up-to-date pickup and drop-off locations. The drivers noted some of the information in the database was outdated, so RTC staff spent several weeks visiting every paratransit bus stop to ensure the stop information was correct. We also set up computers in the operating yards to allow drivers access to the bus stop database, and they could also pick directions and take them out with them on the road. The database became fully operational this past August. And finally, the group focused on the TransDev Driver Incident Tracking Report. This is a tool drivers use to inform our contractor and the RTC about onboard incidents that occur involving passengers and/or their personal care attendants. The drivers were frustrated by the lack of follow-up and were concerned that their issues weren't being heard, in some cases responded to at all. As of August, TransDev now responds to each report filed and contacts the driver with the result of the incident. Many thanks really to both the fixed route and paratransit drivers for the commitment to our customers. We'd also like to update the board on the driver's safety enclosures. Staff reports of all pilot tests have concluded, and thanks to the feedback again from our operators, the features modified with the door latches and the window slider. The final fit tests were completed in mid-September. Production began earlier this month, and installs will begin in early November. We expect to have, insulation on all vehicles will be complete about into the first quarter Next slide. And we are going to update the board on our, actually, as part of our ongoing reporting to you on our transit system, we'd like to provide you with a year-to-year look at our ridership, on-time performance, maintenance, and customer service. As you can see in the top tables, ridership increased system-wide for the period January through July by 2.9 million boardings as a year-over-year comparison. Looking at our customer service snapshot, the number of general ADA comments has decreased year-over-year from five to one, and while the overall number of comments increased, so too has the number of weekday boardings. If you can see, in 2014, it was about 178,000, and a year later, about 193,000 boardings. Because of this, the ratio of comments to boardings has remained almost constant. Next slide. As you can see in the top tables, total road calls have been reduced, even with an increase in revenue mileage. This benchmark is used as an industry standard to identify the effectiveness of a vehicle maintenance program. In this case, the decrease in total road calls would indicate that the contractors' maintenance teams are doing a very good job. And finally, a year-over-year comparison shows we have maintained an 88% 5-minute on-time performance, or OTP, rating while the 10-minute OTP decreased by less than 1%. Providing, of course, timely service continues to be a main focus for RTC and our contractors. The drivers, mechanics, and support staff of both MV and Kiolas need to be commended for all their good work.
Next, Raymond Hess, our Director of Planning Services, will present an update on the new ground-level ozone standards, and this is something that Carolyn Goodman asked us to report regularly on.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Raymond Hess, RTC staff. So you may be aware that last week, on October 1st, the Environmental Protection Agency released new ozone standards. They made the ozone standard stricter from 75 parts per billion, what is that currently now, down to 70 parts per billion. It's important to note that this new standard does not mean that our air quality is getting worse in Southern Nevada. It just means that the EPA has changed the standard for how they measure ozone, and we need to find ways to meet that new standard as a community. I'm here to present to you that we're working very closely with Environmental Protection Agency, as well as the Clark County Department of Air Quality, in terms of what steps we can do to ensure that no transportation projects are adversely affected by this new standard. We've already set up meetings with DAC in particular to talk about what the new standard means for us as a community, and what steps we can take to ensure, move, moving towards compliance for that new standard. The really good news to report here is that because Environmental Protection Agency is going to take a couple of years to actually release the rules, that we do not anticipate that this new standard will have adverse impacts on the development of our next regional transportation plan or the next transportation improvement program. So we anticipate that we'll be able to program federal funding for transportation projects over the course of the next two years without being threatened by these new standards. But we'll continue to work with DAC and as well as the EPA to ensure that we move towards compliance. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Comments or questions? Raymond, the county just appointed Marcy Henson as the new Director of Air Quality, and Marcy certainly has tremendous experience in this field, but if you could reach out to her and bring her up to speed on the RTC perspective of what's going on?
We will.
I think she'll appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mayor Goodman?
Yeah, as we go forward past the next two years, and obviously, we're going to have a new president, and who knows what's going to happen in Congress, you know, because of the issues in California with which we're always concerned, over which we have no control, certainly through David Bowers, if you'll make sure that anything that you know of that's coming down the pipe, that obviously, he's included into, because we need to be together on this, certainly in Southern Nevada, if not throughout the states. Thank you for reporting.
Indeed, Mayor. Thank you.
So Mayor, it's my understanding we have now appointed David Bowers. David, you are the contact, you're like the See Orange Cone Campaign. Anything Air Quality, we're calling you on the cell or at home on the weekend.
He can handle it.
Thank you.
And that, Mr. Chairman, oh, no, we got one more. Next, Angela Castro, our Senior Director of Government Affairs, Media, Marketing, and lots of other stuff, will give you an update on TRAC, T-R-A-C, our Citizens Advisory Committee.
Good morning, members of the board. At the September board meeting, you approved the creation of a Citizens Advisory Committee to help review and provide input regarding our transportation priorities. The RTC is happy to report that we have started working on the framework of this committee, which is otherwise known as the Transportation Resource Advisory Committee. We plan on bringing back for your approval this framework at the November board meeting, and then we anticipate kicking off this committee in December.
Tremendous presentation, Angela. Thank you. Right to it. Thank you.
If there are no other questions, this concludes your General Manager's report, and we can move on to our next agenda item, which is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation Director's report.
Thank you, Tina, Chairman, and Board members. I'll start out with, recently, Tina and others from the Chamber of Commerce and Tracy Larkin visited our delegation last month, told them about the importance of long-term transportation funding. The House Transportation Infrastructure Committee Chairman, Bill Schuster, announced recently that the next House bill will be six years in duration and stick to the current funding level, so that's great news. They haven't identified how to pay for it, and they have to negotiate with the US Senate on the terms of that financing plan for that six-year term. But good news is, the House and the Senate agree on a six-year bill for the term of the bill. Congress is unfortunately on recess next week because of the Columbus Day holiday. They take the whole week off, I guess, but they'll be back in working on this the third week in October. I reported previously that the current extension of the transportation bill goes through October 29th, so we anticipate it'll be another short-term extension, possibly to the end of the year, but they are getting to some major points of agreement, and hopefully, they'll work out their differences and reconcile the bill before the end of the year. Another big announcement, on Monday's Transportation Board meeting coming up, we will announce the Recommended Design Build Team for Project Neon. It's a, this project is over a half a billion-dollar project on I-15, reconstructs the Charleston interchange right down the street here, and has that HOV, that carpool lane connection but from 95 to I-15 express lanes. So we're very excited that it's getting to the point of, by November, we'll award the contract, and then we anticipate that the early part of next year, we'll actually start construction. contract, and then we anticipate that early part of next year, we'll actually start construction. Another news, there is a public information meeting coming up on the Star Interchange project on I-15. It's a collaboration with the RTC and the City of Henderson and NDOT. It's about a $35 million interchange project, and that meeting is on October 22nd at Shore Elementary, 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., and there'll be a presentation at 5:30. We're just getting public input on the project. And one thing to mention was, the NDOT now has the Electronic Statewide Transportation Improvement Program, the ESTIP, which used to be a hard copy document or a PDF that you could look online, but this ESTIP tool on our website is very easy to search for a project, a specific project, or a group of projects in a specific county or area. And it has mapping, it shows you all the dollars associated, what the funding sources are, so great, great way to find any interesting information on a project that the public is interested in or that the board members are interested in. Another workshop is coming up on October 27th. This has to do with NDOT having to adopt regulations for commercial, they call them "commercial electronic variable message signs." A lot of people call them digital billboards. It was something from the, not the last session, but the previous session, that required NDOT to adopt regulations for these. So we're going through that regulation-making process, and just wanted to make it known that we'll have a public workshop at 9:30 at the NDOT offices on Washington Avenue here in Las Vegas on October 27th to solicit comments on the proposed regulations. With that, that concludes the Director's report, and I'm able to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rudy. Commissioner Gee?
Thank you, Rudy. Could you just elaborate just a little bit more on what that last item dealt with?
Yes, so the, there's been, we've had digital billboards in place along the highways and freeways for years. There was a group that filed a lawsuit in Northern Nevada that felt that these were intrusive or caused safety issues, and that the legislature was approached by both groups, the outdoor advertisement community and this group that filed the lawsuit in Northern Nevada, and their solution was that they'll have NDOT adopt the regulations through a public process. So that follows on the heels of that from two years ago. That bill that was passed directed us to do so, and we've been working with both groups to find that middle ground.
Okay, so that's kind of like the signs that we say, you know, this many minutes to something, or?
It could, the ones that say like the waiting time at an emergency room. It can affect those because they have a message that changes this variable, so it could affect those, but typically it's the large digital billboards and the Trivision, the ones that rotate and maybe have three messages on three separate panels.
What about mobile billboards that are not really allowed on our right away?
It doesn't regulate mobile billboards.
Let's work on that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. That brings us to your last item, which is item number 39, to conduct your final citizens' participation period.
This is our second time set aside for public comment. Those wishing to speak to the board?
Good morning, Commissioners. Hey, to you would like to welcome Mayor Goodman, and I don't know the title of Mr. Woodbury, but welcome to the RTC. I would like to give a report. I haven't been attending the RTC monthly meetings since July, August, and yesterday I was surprised, I mean, last month I was surprised based on the fact that, I guess you guys broke the record, and when the gentleman was speaking, there was the closing comments already. Anyway, I just want to say that we do have a contract with Keolis. It was ratified on June 16th, and when's that, 17th? 13th, okay, I stand corrected. Anyway, but everything's moving, is moving pretty smooth now. It is for us to do our job in representing the bargaining unit. As for MV, MV and the ATU, we held our arbitration hearing on September 25th, which now will be up to the arbitrator to decide what's going to happen with our wages. Both parties agreed to it and not discussed any further on that, so we'll leave it at that. And we're hoping by, at least by before Thanksgiving, we have a decision from the arbitrator. There was this incident that happened over the weekend at the Sunset Yard that I emailed MJ, I believe, where they had some emergency vehicles, the fire truck, and I guess paramedics wanted to enter Sunset Yard, but they were not allowed because I guess Alec Barton said they needed to be escorted. That's a concern that perhaps the staff of RTC should address, based on the fact that it would have been a real fire, somebody dying of a heart attack, there would have been some problems, and in the end, I guess they ended up getting escorted, so we just thought we'd bring that up to you. The other issue we have right now, we know that MV is under the memorandum of understanding that we signed back in May 2013. The problem we have right now is that apparently they think that by them forming a committee, that they have a right to go ahead and discuss with the committee and not the union. That's not the way it works. We already filed four labor charges against MV. One is being heard on October 27th, and the other three, we just filed it a week or a week and a half ago. And I think they need to understand that ATU here, we are here, the exclusive representatives of the bargaining unit for Keolis and MV. They cannot come in here and just make their own rules and meet with this committee, and it's done. It doesn't work that way. We just thought we'd let you know, there's some issues right there between the new GM, I guess it's going to be, or I don't know who it is, but they need to learn that we are the ATU, and we're not going nowhere. And I'm sure the Commissioners are happy that there's peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mendoza. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board? Can you, we can get a microphone to you. Hold on just for a moment. Do we have the portable mic up there? She can come up to the podium? That'll work. All right, good morning.
Good morning. My comments are regarding paratransit.
Ma'am, if you could just identify yourself for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Marcia Rodriguez. I've lived here in the Valley since 1974. I've been riding paratransit for over 12 years, and things that are happening now are really concerning me. According to a supervisor, routes are being combined, and unfortunately, what's happening, the majority of the time that I'm picked up, I'm picked up in the late window, which means 25 minutes after the scheduled pickup, usually within two or three minutes before that 25 minutes. So you can, with the five minutes early to be ready, that's a half an hour, and then you get picked up, and instead of going in a general direction, like from Summerlin to your destination, they're going part of the way, and then they go back up to Summerlin, and back and forth, and you're on the bus for almost two hours, plus your half an hour, it gets a little bit long. And with this, the drivers having, making their pickups in the late window like that, they're trying to do the best they can and be safe. There are some really good drivers, but a lot of the drivers are really under stress. You can tell in their driving, some of them will drive quite aggressively. I made a report a week and a half ago about a driver speeding 55 miles an hour down Shian when it's a 40, running a red light to turn. The whole thing is, I understand that paratransit wants the drivers to have so many pickups and drop-offs within an hour's time, and I understand that you want to go the shortest route because it's going to cost less money, but the issue here is safety. If this continues like this, if they keep doing this type of thing, what's going to happen? We're going to end up with an accident, with people hurt, and I think, you know, this needs to be addressed. And the last thing I'm going to say is, paratransit seems to be concerned about when they get there to pick you up, but they don't care about what time they drop you off, and I'm very tired of going by my house and not being able to be dropped off. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rodriguez, and I'm sure we'll get someone to speak to you about your experiences. Thank you for coming down. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board? Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Thank you for affording me again the opportunity to speak before you. For the record, I am Alita Dupree, A-L-E-T-A-D-U-P-R-E. I also state before you, for the record, that I am a female service-disabled Desert Storm veteran. So I heard a lot of good things today, just more miscellaneous items. First of all, I state I ride buses. I don't, I choose not to own a car, so I have my 15-day bus pass again, and I use the phone, and I really like RideTracker, so I have my phone here, which I will populate, I'll show it to you later. RideTracker is good. I'm going to try to open this up here, but the print is kind of small on it. It's kind of hard sometimes to open it to read the material on the RideTracker, and when I bring up a map of stops, which is great, but I can't pull up other stops. I can only get the stops in my physical location. Other transit apps let me page around and look for stops all over the place, so I can predict ahead of time of buses I want to use as a disabled person. It's nice to know when the bus is coming, especially to find shelter in adverse weather. I'm concerning the comments before, I'm looking forward to the new app that will come out, which will make my life easier. I'm hoping that my first time using a phone app to pay for my fares will be here in Las Vegas. San Francisco is starting one soon, don't know when, but soon. So this will be some good things. I look forward to the new service changes that will make Sahara more frequent, because I live in Rancho Sahara, so 15 minutes on Sahara will be much better for me, and I look forward to the new buses, which will have the more disabled seating. I would like to see a stronger reinforcement up into the northeast on the MAX, putting new buses on the MAX to bring me up to Nellis Air Force Base, where I take care of my various shopping, et cetera. So that's all for today, but thank you for letting me share some time with you.
Thank you, Alita. And I know we're working on that high technology. At flood control this morning, we were given what I thought was a keychain, and apparently this is something called a flash drive. It has our annual report on it, so, Alita, you talked to the staff about high technology. You better not talk to some of our board members. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board this morning?
Hi, Commissioners. You know who I am, Robert Seibert. As to Marcia's comments about scheduling and stuff, came to my understanding through TransDev that you guys might be bumping our 1.74 per hour to above 2. The problem is, you guys need to fix your computer system before you do any of this. It does not route correctly. Geo-coordinates are wrong. Customer service on your end, the people that take in the pickups, need to quit doing a copy and paste and actually listen to what a client says during television, because sometimes they change information. We've had that happen more than enough times on the routes, and August, our August Safety Meeting with TransDev, they came in and talked to us about productivity and how they were being fined because of it. I really don't care about that stuff, but I'm a senior driver. I'm more worried about our rookies that are out there. When our company walks in and says, hey, we're not making our numbers, we need to do this, it's going to cause accidents, it's going to cause them to drive faster, you're going to have mistakes. I'm all about safety, safety for the clients, and like I said, the other thing, your computer system, it does back and forth, all over the place, making absolutely no sense. The reason I got the award, I happened to get lucky with the route that I'm on. It's a pretty, pretty basic route where I can, and if there is a mistake, I can switch it and get it done myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board? Seeing and hearing no one, we'll close this portion of public comment. Thank you all for coming this morning. This meeting is adjourned.